Good evening, everyone. It's seven o'clock and I'd like to call this organizational regular board meeting of the Willoughby Eastlake Board of Education to order. Item 1C is the roll call. Mr. Ternell, will you please call the roll?
Mrs. Bear?
Here.
Mr. Boxler?
Here.
Mrs. Mensah?
Here.
Mr. Roskus?
Here.
Mr. Vettori?
Here.
We have a quorum.
All right, thank you, Mr. Ternell. Next item is Item 1D, we'll recite the Pledge of Allegiance. You all please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item is Item E, the Oath of Office to Elect Board Members Krista Bear, William Boxler, and Stacy Mensah.
Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Ohio, and that you will faithfully and impartially discharge your duties as members of the Board of Education of the Willoughby Eastlake School District, Lake County, Ohio, to the best of your ability and in accordance with the laws now in effect and hereafter, to be enacted during your continuance in said office and until your successor is elected and qualified.
I do.
Congratulations. Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Ohio, and that you will faithfully and impartially discharge your duties as members of the Board of Education of the Willoughby Eastlake School District, Lake County, Ohio, to the best of your ability and in accordance with the laws now in effect and hereafter, to be enacted during your continuance in said office and until your successor is elected and qualified?
I do.
Congratulations. Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Ohio, and that you will faithfully and impartially discharge your duties as members of the Board of Education of the Willoughby Eastlake School District, Lake County, Ohio, to the best of your ability and in accordance with the laws now in effect and hereafter, to be enacted during your continuance in said office and until your successor is elected and qualified?
I do.
Congratulations.
Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Ohio, and that you will faithfully and impartially discharge your duties as members of the Board of Education of the Willoughby Eastlake School District, Lake County, Ohio, to the best of your ability and in accordance with the laws now in effect and hereafter, to be enacted during your continuance in said office and until your successor is elected and qualified?
I do.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Do we have a Bible or anything?
I don't think so.
Okay, it's all just, would you raise your right hand if you know? Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Ohio, and that you will faithfully and impartially discharge your duties as members of the Board of Education of the Willoughby Eastlake School District, Lake County, Ohio, to the best of your ability and in accordance with the laws now in effect and hereafter, to be enacted during your continuance in said office and until your successor is elected and qualified?
I do.
Congratulations. In accordance with board policy, only I can distribute the oath, so I'm going to have to say this again. There was me. Call up Chris, he won't figure this out. Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Ohio, and that you will faithfully and impartially discharge your duties as members of the Board of Education of the Willoughby Eastlake School District, Lake County, Ohio, to the best of your ability and in accordance with the laws now in effect and hereafter, to be enacted during your continuance in said office and until your successor is elected and qualified?
I do.
Congratulations. In accordance with board policy, only I can distribute the oath, so I'm going to have to say this again. There was me. Call up Chris, he won't figure this out. Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Ohio, and that you will faithfully and impartially discharge your duties as members of the Board of Education of the Willoughby Eastlake School District, Lake County, Ohio, to the best of your ability and in accordance with the laws now in effect and hereafter, to be enacted during your continuance in said office and until your successor is elected and qualified?
I do.
Congratulations.
Next item is organizational Item 1F, which is the election and oath of office for Board of Education President to one-year term. Oh, and I would like to ask for nominations for the Board of Education President. Do I hear nomination?
Mr. President, I'd like to nominate Krista Bear.
Thank you, Mr. Boxler. Do I hear a second?
Mr. President, I will second the nomination.
Thank you, Mr. Roskus. Are there any further nominations? Any items for discussion? Mr. Ternell, will you please call the roll?
Mrs. Bear?
Yes.
Mr. Boxler?
Yes.
Mrs. Mensah?
Yes.
Mr. Roskus?
Yes.
Mr. Vettori?
Yes.
Krista Bear is now the President of the Willoughby Eastlake City School District.
I'm really enjoying being President pro tempus. I'm going to miss this. Item 1G is the election and oath of office of the Board of Education Vice President to one-year term. Do I have a nomination for Vice President?
Mr. Vettori?
Yes, Mr. Bear.
I nominate Stacy Mensah for Vice President.
Thank you, Ms. Bear. Do I have a second for that nomination?
Mr. Vettori, I'd like to second that nomination.
Thank you, Mr. Boxler. Are there any more nominations? Are there any discussions? Mr. Ternell, will you please call the roll?
Mrs. Bear?
Yes.
Mr. Boxler?
Yes.
Mrs. Mensah?
Yes.
Mr. Roskus?
Yes.
Mr. Vettori?
Yes.
Krista Bear is now the President of the Willoughby Eastlake City School District.
I'm really enjoying being President pro tempus. I'm going to miss this. Item 1G is the election and oath of office of the Board of Education Vice President to one-year term. Do I have a nomination for Vice President?
Mr. Vettori?
Yes, Mr. Bear.
I nominate Stacy Mensah for Vice President.
Thank you, Ms. Bear. Do I have a second for that nomination?
Mr. Vettori, I'd like to second that nomination.
Thank you, Mr. Boxler. Are there any more nominations? Are there any discussions? Mr. Ternell, will you please call the roll?
Mrs. Bear?
Yes.
Mr. Boxler?
Yes.
Mrs. Mensah?
Yes.
Mr. Roskus?
Yes.
Mr. Vettori?
Yes.
Stacy Mensah is the Vice President for the Board of Education. At this time, the President and Vice President will assume their roles as President and Vice President. Congratulations, Mr. Vettori, you are no longer the president.
No, we're just making sure.
Do you, Krista Bear, solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Ohio, and that you will faithfully and impartially perform the duties of your office as President for the Board of Education of the Willoughby Eastlake City School District to the best of your ability and in accordance with the laws now in effect and hereafter, to be enacted during your continuance in said office and until your successor is elected and qualified?
I do.
Congratulations. Do you, Stacy Mensah, solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Ohio, and that you will faithfully and impartially perform the duties of your office as President for the Board of Education of the Willoughby Eastlake City School District to the best of your ability and in accordance with the laws now in effect and hereafter, to be enacted during your continuance in said office and until your successor is elected and qualified?
I do.
Congratulations. Do you, Stacy Mensah, solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Ohio, and that you will faithfully and impartially perform the duties of your office as President for the Board of Education of the Willoughby Eastlake City School District to the best of your ability and in accordance with the laws now in effect and hereafter, to be enacted during your continuance in said office and until your successor is elected and qualified?
I do.
Congratulations. Do you, Stacy Mensah, solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Ohio, and that you will faithfully and impartially perform the duties of your office as President for the Board of Education of the Willoughby Eastlake City School District to the best of your ability and in accordance with the laws now in effect and hereafter, to be enacted during your continuance in said office and until your successor is elected and qualified?
I do.
Congratulations. Do you, Stacy Mensah, solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Ohio, and that you will faithfully and impartially perform the duties of your office as President for the Board of Education of the Willoughby Eastlake City School District to the best of your ability and in accordance with the laws now in effect and hereafter, to be enacted during your continuance in said office and until your successor is elected and qualified?
I do.
Congratulations. Do you, Stacy Mensah, solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Ohio, and that you will faithfully and impartially perform the duties of your office as President for the Board of Education of the Willoughby Eastlake City School District to the best of your ability and in accordance with the laws now in effect and hereafter, to be enacted during your continuance in said office and until your successor is elected and qualified?
I do.
Congratulations. Do you, Stacy Mensah, solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Ohio, and that you will faithfully and impartially perform the duties of your office as President for the Board of Education of the Willoughby Eastlake City School District to the best of your ability and in accordance with the laws now in effect and hereafter, to be enacted during your continuance in said office and until your successor is elected and qualified?
I do.
Congratulations. Do you, Stacy Mensah, solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Ohio, and that you will faithfully and impartially perform the duties of your office as President for the Board of Education of the Willoughby Eastlake City School District to the best of your ability and in accordance with the laws now in effect and hereafter, to be enacted during your continuance in said office and until your successor is elected and qualified?
I do.
Congratulations. Do you, Stacy Mensah, solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Ohio, and that you will faithfully and impartially perform the duties of your office as President for the Board of Education of the Willoughby Eastlake City School District to the best of your ability and in accordance with the laws now in effect and hereafter, to be enacted during your continuance in said office and until your successor is elected and qualified?
I do.
Congratulations. Do you, Stacy Mensah, solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Ohio, and that you will faithfully and impartially perform the duties of your office as President for the Board of Education of the Willoughby Eastlake City School District to the best of your ability and in accordance with the laws now in effect and hereafter, to be enacted during your continuance in said office and until your successor is elected and qualified?
I do.
Congratulations.
Is it okay if I continue? Okay. Excuse me, I'm going to do that often tonight until I get through this first meeting. We, as your Board of Education, want to thank you for the opportunity to serve the Willoughby Eastlake community and the students and staff of this district. We would also like to take a minute to review a few key parts of our Board of Education's philosophy. The Board declares and thereby reaffirms its intent to the following. A, to maintain two-way communications with citizens of this district. The Board shall keep them informed of the progress and problems of the school district, and the citizens shall be urged to bring their aspirations and concerns about the district to the attention of this body. And B, establish policies and make decisions on the basis of declared educational philosophy and goals. And C, we will act as a truly representative body for its citizens in all matters related to programs and operations. The Board recognizes that ultimate responsibility for public education rests with the state, but the Board of Education has been assigned specific authority through statute, and the Board shall not relinquish or fail to exercise that authority. Now, at this point in our organizational meeting, we have Items H through S for consideration. It's important to us that you understand that these items are required to be addressed in the first 15 days of each calendar year, per our bylaws and policies. Please observe, on our agenda, that Items H through S have a little asterisk next to them. Any item which has this symbol is a part of our consent agenda. Now, this consent agenda has items that do not require individual motions or votes. And our adopted rules of parliamentary procedure, which is Robert's Rules, provide for a consent agenda listing several items for approval of the Board by a single motion. Most of the items listed under the consent agenda have gone through Board Subcommittee and/or through Superintendent and Treasurer Review and Recommendation. Documentation concerning these items has been provided to all Board members and the public in advance to ensure an extensive and thorough review. Items may be removed from the consent agenda at the request of any Board member. And with that, we'll continue on with our meeting. Dr. Thompson?
Item H, for your consideration, is the establishment of the Board of Education dates. And each year at this meeting, the Board of Education will develop a schedule and set its meeting dates. This calendar can be adjusted throughout the year and frequently is, as needed for Board discussions or actions. Each time a meeting is scheduled, the public is given 48 hours' notice, and this is posted on our website and also in the newspaper. On rare occasions, such as when the old Board Office burned down, there was an emergency meeting of the Board, and it is not legally necessary to give 48 hours, although that rarely happens. And hopefully, we won't experience a Board Office burning down again. And these meetings are always held in public. That's Item H.
Letter I, Robert's Rules of Order. As Mrs. Bear mentioned, we do adopt Robert's Rules of Order in the absence of board policy. So this is your motions and the roll calls, and so that's how we conduct business. Letter J, the Board has requested that I become their designee for Certified Public Records. So, and since I'm very excited about that responsibility, I'll be taking that training very soon. And since I never formally was appointed the designee for Mr. Roskus, I'm also his designee. So, I have to be their designee at least once per term and fulfill Public Records training, because I am the Public Records custodian, a job I am very happy to do on a day-to-day basis, but someone's got to do it. We're being very sarcastic today, aren't we?
No, it's you.
Okay. Letter K, establishment of the Service Fund for Fiscal Year 2022. This is, in accordance with Ohio Revice Code 3315.15, this allows the Board to establish a fund which cannot exceed $2 per child, which our current enrollment is $7,401, or $20,000, whichever is greater. So, that may be set aside from the General Fund to be known as the Service Fund, and it's only to be used in paying the expenses of the members of the Board of Education actually incurring in performance of their duties or of their official representatives who are sent out of the school district for the purpose of promoting the welfare of the school under their charge. So, the recommendation is that it be set at the $20,000 amount. So, that would allow you guys to get training and whatever else you desire while performing your duties as Board members. Letter L, recommendations by the Board of Education to authorize the Treasurer. This would be to request advances of taxes collected in calendar year 22. I'll be sending that resolution to Mr. Galloway tomorrow. Very excited about that.
If our...
To reinvest available funds in calendar year 22 in accordance with board policy and establish administrative procedures. The summaries of these investments are also in the monthly board reports throughout the year. And Letter C, to pay bills within the adopted appropriations in calendar year 22. Letter M, these are the appointments of our legal counsel. You could see the legal counsels that we use frequently, Squire, Patton, Boggs, this would be who would conduct our debt resolutions or levy resolutions. Hoover, Caseon, they do our board of revisions. Walter Haverfield, their general counsel, as is Peters, Cleo, and Markekis. So, we have multiple, just in case we're not able to, one is unable to meet our needs at that time, as far as those two. Letter N, Board of Education meeting minutes. They are to be provided to the members of the Board of Education. With three days or more in advance of the meeting, an authorization is given for the Board to waive reading of the minutes at the meeting. So, I know how much you don't want me to read those minutes every meeting, so that's why you're given that notice, and you have the ability to waive those. Resolution requesting notification. Be resolved that the Treasurer is able to approve the resolution requesting that the Board of Education be notified by the Tax Commissioner of any application for exemption from taxation for any property located within the district. This is in accordance with Ohio Revice Code 5715.27. Letter P is the tax budget. Very sad that no one really wanted to talk about it. Nobody. These are the funds set by the County Auditor's Office or with the County Auditor's Office. These are just funds that are levied through our emergency levies, our operating levy from 1976, our permanent improvement levy, and our bond issue. So, those are all presented. Those are, that's what we can collect, that is not what we're going to spend. So, I want to state that these are not appropriations, that is just levied amounts. Resolution for group health, vision, and dental insurance for Board members. All of the Board members are allowed to partake in the health insurance plan for the school district, however, it would be 100% cost for the school Board members to partake, and you would have to elect that you'd like to do that in public session. So, this is like a qualifying event. If any of you want to enroll, just let me know.
No.
Okay.
No.
Preauthorization of advance of funds. This just allows me to make advances within the month, so just based off of timing. The Board meetings are held earlier in the month. At the end of the month, I might need to make an advance. This just gives me preauthorization to make that advance, and then I'll get it board-approved at the next meeting.
Item S is the hiring authority. This item gives the Superintendent the ability to employ personnel on a temporary basis until the next Board meeting, and then seek Board approval. This is done so that vacancies can be filled and we can continue to operate smoothly. As always, prior to being hired, a person must pass a background check and meet all the interview criteria.
So, this requires a motion, correct? Just making sure.
Yes.
So, do I hear a motion to approve Item S, hiring authority?
Madam President, I make a motion to approve Item 1S, hiring authority.
Do I hear a second?
Madam President, I second that motion.
Okay. The floor is open for discussion? It's a pretty cut-and-dry one, got to keep the district operating during meetings.
It doesn't happen all that frequently, but it would be just in a case where someone resigns at a time when we didn't see coming, or someone becomes ill, something of that nature.
Okay. Hearing no more discussion, Mr. Ternell, please take a roll call.
Mr. Boxler?
Yes.
Mr. Roskus?
Yes.
Mr. Vettori?
Yes.
Mrs. Mensah?
Yes.
Mrs. Bear?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
So, at this time, the organizational portion of our meeting has been completed. Our agenda is shifting to cover items, which are a part of a regular Board meeting structure. Next, we have Number Two, Community Engagement, A, Board President Q and A. And, hold on a second. This portion of the meeting is where we will address questions or public comments made in the previous meeting, and this one would be December. The only public comment that was made in the December meeting was addressed, it was Stacy McQuiggin. She spoke in December. We expanded on her question in regards to Safe School and security, and felt that the question was answered during Board discussion at that meeting. And we, as a Board, would also like to make it a general practice to address publicly emails that we receive in between meetings. We received an email questioning the relationship, from a constituent in the community, questioning the relationship between our district and OSBA, and they asked for clarification and just a little bit of discussion on the OSBA item. That will be detailed in Item D, under the renewal levy resolution today. We'll transition now to B, public comment. Now, the policy which outlines public comment was amended and adopted in the December 2021 meeting. There were changes made, and it had its second reading in December. We feel it is important that the revised policy be read publicly in advance of our community's participation in tonight's meeting. So, this is the actual policy. The Board of Education recognizes the value to school governance of public comment on educational issues and the importance of allowing members of the public to express themselves on school matters of community interest. The Board offers public participation to members of the public in accordance with the procedures below. The Board applies these procedures to all speakers and does not discriminate based on the identity of the speaker, the content of the speech, or the viewpoint of the speaker. The Board is also committed to conducting its meeting in a productive and efficient manner. That assures that the regular agenda of the Board is completed in a reasonable period of time. We will honor the voluntary nature of the Board's time and using that efficiently, and allows for a fair and adequate opportunity for input to be considered. The Presiding Officer of each Board meeting, the President, is permitted, shall administer the rules of the Board for its conduct. The Presiding Officer shall be guided by the following rules. A, public participation shall be permitted as indicated on the order of business and/or at the discretion of the Presiding Officer. B, attendees must register with their intention to participate in the public participation portion of the meeting upon their arrival. C, individuals may not register others to speak during public participation. D, participants must first be recognized by the Presiding Officer and will be requested to preface their comments by an announcement of their name, address, and group affiliation, if and when appropriate. Each statement made by a participant shall be limited to three minutes in duration unless extended by the Presiding Officer. All statements shall be directed to the Presiding Officer. No person may address or question Board members individually. The Presiding Officer may interrupt, warn, or terminate a participant's session when they make comments that are repetitive, obscene, and/or comments that constitute a true threat. Request any individual to stop speaking and/or leave the meeting when that person does not observe reasonable decorum or is disruptive to the conduct and/or orderly progress of the meeting. Request the assistance of law enforcement officers in the removal of a disorderly person when the person's conduct interferes with the conduct and/or orderly progress of the meeting, or call for a recess or an adjournment to another time when the lack of public decorum so interferes with the orderly conduct of the meeting. And also to waive these rules. The portion of the meeting during which the participation of the public is invited shall be limited to 20 minutes unless extended by a vote of the Board. We encourage those in attendance tonight, if you are not speaking, if you've not chosen to preregister during the public comment, please send questions or concerns directly via email to the Board. This will ensure that your concerns are issued to us, and it will not impact this meeting's ability to address the stated items on our agenda in a timely manner. With that, Mr. Ternell, who is our first participant in public comment?
We have Stacy McQuiggin.
Hi, welcome to all the new members. Nice to see you up there. I'm Stacy McQuiggin. My address is 36260 Valley Vista Drive in Eastlake. At the last meeting, I requested that you ask the homeroom teachers at the middle school and the high school level to have the students take their phones out and add the Safe School helpline to their phones. I may be mistaken, but I don't think this has been done yet. I'm hoping not only would the teachers have the student add the number of the Safe Schools helpline to their phone in their presence or download the app, but if they could quickly explain that this line gets cellphone, it can get texts, it can get voicemails, and it can be used to report thefts, it can be used to highlight safety issues, it can be used to talk about mental health issues, their own or a student that they're concerned about. Also vandalism. I'm not sure that they're aware of all the things that line can be used for. Mr. Frye mentioned at the boosters meeting in October that after the SOS presentation, he had 15 to 20 students that were referred to him. So, I think it's really important that students are aware that they can use this helpline for referrals as well, and it's not just, you know, a weapon or whatnot, but obviously that's very important. After speaking with Eileen Bowers, it seems our relationship with Crossroads hasn't quite worked out as planned, since they've been unable to provide the clinicians that we've requested. I understand this is a very difficult time to staff mental health professionals, as the industry overall is short-staffed, but at the same time, our need is probably greater than ever. I was wondering if we could start to think outside of the box, how we can better utilize the mental health professionals that we already have in our district. Is there time being spent with students, or do they have other administrative duties that can be managed elsewhere? I noticed when I was working at the middle school that they don't have an administrative assistant anymore in the guidance office. I think they have them at the high schools, it doesn't look like they have them at the middle schools. I believe at one time they did, and that was just one area where I was thinking, well, these guidance counselors are most likely meeting with students, but then they're also having to do the administrative role. And so, if we can't fill the role with mental health professionals, can we make sure the guidance counselors are meeting one-on-one and maybe fill an administrative role even from a part-time perspective? So, that was just one example of thinking outside the box, and I know most of you talked during your campaign that mental health is extremely important, that's what the staff has mentioned, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. McQuiggin. I hope I said that correctly.
Was that? Oh, it's fine. I answered all of them.
Fair enough. Mr. Ternell, do we have anyone else for public comment?
No, we do not.
Okay.
Item Three is Board Discussion, and so what I would like to cover is safety and student climate, what we're doing in terms of immediate action, and I have already instituted, safety and student climate, more long-range proposals, a COVID update, remote learning plans, and a discussion I would like to have about overnight field trips. So, it's a lot, I know, but these are all pretty pressing issues that I think it's important that we cover. And I will slide out of my corner and make my way around. Thank you. I've been told I just pushed a button, right, Dave? Wow, how about that? Nice work, Dave Heiner. So, just some things that I'd like to cover are safety and student climate, our immediate actions, those long-range proposals, COVID, remote, just what I just covered. So, what we've done, and it's made a significant difference so far in our buildings, we have added additional SROs in our high schools and middle schools to add more security. Willowick Middle, for example, does not have a full-time
Someone becomes ill, something of that nature.
Okay. Hearing no more discussion, Mr. Tarnello, please take a roll call.
Mr. Boxler?
Yes.
Mr. Roskis?
Yes.
Mr. Vettori?
Yes.
Mrs. Mensah?
Yes.
Mrs. Baer?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
So at this time, the organizational portion of our meeting has been completed. Our agenda is shifting to cover items which are a part of a regular board meeting structure. Next, we have number two, Community Engagement, A, Board President Q and A. And, one second. This portion of the meeting is where we will address questions or public comments made in the previous meeting. In this one, it would be December. The only public comment that was made in the December meeting was addressed, it was Stacy McQuiggin. She spoke in December. We expanded on her question in regards to Safe School and security, and felt that the question was answered during board discussion at that meeting. And we, as a board, would also like to make it a general practice to address publicly emails that we receive in between meetings. We received an email questioning the relationship, from a constituent in the community, questioning the relationship between our district and OSBA. And they asked for clarification and just a little bit of discussion on the OSBA item. That will be detailed in Item D, under the renewal levy resolution today. We'll transition now to B, Public Comment. Now, the policy which outlines public comment was amended and adopted in the December 2021 meeting. There were changes made, and it had its second reading in December. We feel it is important that the revised policy be read publicly in advance of our community's participation in tonight's meeting. So this is the actual policy. "The Board of Education recognizes the value to school governance of public comment on educational issues, and the importance of allowing members of the public to express themselves on school matters of community interest. The Board offers public participation to members of the public in accordance with the procedures below. The Board applies these procedures to all speakers and does not discriminate based on the identity of the speaker, the content of the speech, or the viewpoint of the speaker. The Board is also committed to conducting its meeting in a productive and efficient manner. That assures that the regular agenda of the Board is completed in a reasonable period of time. We will honor the voluntary nature of the Board's time and using that efficiently, and allows for a fair and adequate opportunity for input to be considered. The Presiding Officer of each Board meeting, the President, is permitted, shall administer the rules of the Board for its conduct. The Presiding Officer shall be guided by the following rules. A, public participation shall be permitted as indicated on the order of business and/or at the discretion of the Presiding Officer. B, attendees must register with their intention to participate in the public participation portion of the meeting upon their arrival. C, individuals may not register others to speak during public participation. D, participants must first be recognized by the Presiding Officer, and will be requested to preface their comments by an announcement of their name, address, and group affiliation if and when appropriate. Each statement made by a participant shall be limited to three minutes in duration unless extended by the Presiding Officer. All statements shall be directed to the Presiding Officer. No person may address or question Board members individually. The Presiding Officer may interrupt, warn, or terminate a participant's session when they make comments that are repetitive, obscene, and/or comments that constitute a true threat. Request any individual to stop speaking and/or leave the meeting when that person does not observe reasonable decorum or is disruptive to the conduct and/or orderly progress of the meeting. Request the assistance of law enforcement officers in the removal of a disorderly person when the person's conduct interferes with the conduct and/or orderly progress of the meeting, or call for a recess or an adjournment to another time when the lack of public decorum so interferes with the orderly conduct of the meeting. And also to waive these rules. The portion of the meeting during which the participation of the public is invited shall be limited to twenty minutes unless extended by a vote of the Board. We encourage those in attendance tonight. If you are not speaking, if you've not chosen to preregister during the public comment, please send questions or concerns directly via email to the Board. This will ensure that your concerns are issued to us, and it will not impact this meeting's ability to address the stated items on our agenda in a timely manner. With that, Mr. Tarnello, who is our first participant in public comment?
We have Stacy McQuiggin.
Hi, welcome to all the new members. Nice to see you up there. I'm Stacy McQuiggin. My address is 36260 Valley Vista Drive in Eastlake. At the last meeting, I requested that you ask the homeroom teachers at the middle school and the high school level to have the students take their phones out and add the Safe School helpline to their phones. I may be mistaken, but I don't think this has been done yet. I'm hoping not only would the teachers have the student add the number of the Safe Schools helpline to their phone in their presence or download the app, but if they could quickly explain that this line gets cellphone, it can get texts, it can get voicemails, and it can be used to report thefts. It can be used to highlight safety issues. It can be used to talk about mental health issues, their own or a student that they're concerned about. Also vandalism. I'm not sure that they're aware of all the things that line can be used for. Mr. Frye mentioned at the boosters meeting in October that after the SOS presentation, he had fifteen to twenty students that were referred to him. So I think it's really important that students are aware that they can use this helpline for referrals as well. And it's not just, you know, a weapon or whatnot, but obviously that's very important. After speaking with Eileen Bowers, it seems our relationship with Crossroads hasn't quite worked out as planned since they've been unable to provide the clinicians that we requested. I understand this is a very difficult time to staff mental health professionals as the industry overall is short-staffed. But at the same time, our need is probably greater than ever. I was wondering if we could start to think outside of the box, how we can better utilize the mental health professionals that we already have in our district. Is there time being spent with students? Or do they have other administrative duties that can be managed elsewhere? I noticed when I was working at the middle school that they don't have an administrative assistant anymore in the guidance office. I think they have them at the high schools. It doesn't look like they have them at the middle schools. I believe at one time they did. And that was just one area where I was thinking, well, these guidance counselors are most likely meeting with students, but then they're also having to do the administrative role. And so if we can't fill the role with mental health professionals, can we make sure the guidance counselors are meeting one-on-one and maybe fill an administrative role even from a part-time perspective? So that was just one example of thinking outside the box. And I know most of you talked during your campaign that mental health is extremely important. That's what the staff has mentioned, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. McQuiggin. I hope I said that correctly.
Was that? Oh, it's fine. I answered all of them, yeah.
Fair enough. Mr. Tarnello, do we have anyone else for public comment?
No, we do not.
Okay.
Item three is Board Discussion. And so what I'd like to cover is safety and student climate, what we're doing in terms of immediate action and have already instituted. Safety and student climate, more long-range proposals, a COVID update, remote learning plans, and a discussion I would like to have about overnight field trips. So it's a lot, I know, but these are all pretty pressing issues that I think it's important that we cover. And I will slide out of my corner and make my way around. Thank you. I've been told I just pushed a button, right Dave? Wow, how about that? Nice work, Dave Heiner. So just some things that I'd like to cover are safety and student climate, our immediate actions, those long-range proposals, COVID, remote, just what I just covered. So what we've done, and it's made a significant difference so far in our buildings, we have added additional SROs in our high schools and middle schools to add more security. Willowick Middle, for example, does not have a full-time SRO, but we have requested that. They're having the same challenges that all walks of life have, and that is finding the officers available to do that. But so far, we've had additional officers at North, South, and Willoughby Middle. Also, the police chiefs have agreed, we've had a meeting with the police chiefs, and they have agreed to conduct random walkthroughs of day shift personnel. So they're walking through at random times. Would you mind passing those out for me? What I'm handing out, or what Mr. Tarnello is handing out, are specific details about what we're going through right now. Hall monitors have been posted in the hallways and outside of restrooms. Restrooms are our hotspots. There are one hundred and fifty-three cameras at each high school. You cannot do anything at the high schools without being on cameras, and we're adding additional cameras at our middle schools as well. So unfortunately, the bathrooms have become the hotspots. So what we're asking hall monitors to do is a large group walks into the bathroom, use your radio, call for the police. You hear a loud noise in there, call for the police, and depending on the gender of the person, to walk in, if that's gender appropriate. School administration has been encouraged to be visible in the hallways, in between classes as well, to spread themselves out. Spoke with the police this morning, one of our SROs, and they said it's very effective because what had been happening to some extent was kids would see where the SRO was and do whatever they wanted to do on the other side of the building. And now they don't know where they are, and we're rotating and moving those SROs. And then we're encouraging our staff to be visible in the hallways as well, as much as we possibly can. So far, since January third, it's made a pretty significant difference. So we have an overarching goal, and our goal is to meet the educational, emotional needs of some of the most at-risk students that are currently responding to personal crisis by demonstrating aggressive behaviors in the school environment. So what we want to do is create an alternative school for the purpose of improving safety, improving school climate in the high schools and middle schools, and addressing the needs of those identified students. So we're designing, and what we're working on right now is designing a place actually housed what we believe would be South High School. If you are familiar with South High School, the old weight room or the old shop areas, it's probably about four thousand square feet or so. Back there, there are two rooms, and there's a couple of rooms we can move into as well if we need that. But we're designing for forty high school students and twenty middle school students are the ability to house up to sixty students. It would be self-contained. They would enter in their own entrance, exit, in their own exit, and have their own bathrooms. The emphasis will be on mental health, much like what Stacy talked about. We certainly know that's a major issue. The challenge with mental health is that when we first started our mental health program, we were the first school district in Lake County to do so. And so we got all of our, we got our pick, if you will, of the staff members that were available. And even that was still hard to staff all the way up. And then after a couple of failed levies, by vote of the community to some extent, it was determined that that was lower on the priority list of things to return, and our staffing was cut. Subsequently, since then, all the other schools in Lake County have adopted the same program that we adopted, or that we created. And now staffing is next to impossible. So that is the challenge with finding mental health counselors. Now, I have a new board, but the previous board wanted to make sure that these people were all certified. That was an important component for the previous board. So I don't know where you stand on that, but that makes it more challenging. But the concern was that you would have people that weren't qualified. When you talk about guidance counselors, even in high schools, guidance counselors are not trained mental health professionals. It's a very different category of type of training, better than nothing for sure. But that's not what they specialize in. So we'll also use our Behavior Intervention Specialists to help us make those modifications. If you're familiar with Bridge to Success, it is a combination of an online program and teachers in the room helping facilitate those students as well. So it's a hybrid model of delivering curriculum to our students. It'd be a basic curriculum, graduation-type of curriculum. Just because you go there doesn't mean you stay there forever, but you would go there for, obviously, disciplinary reasons, behavioral reasons. There would also need to be a change to district policy moving into next year. And once we get further in this process, you'll see some recommendations for changes to district policy. For example, our Student Code of Conduct as it relates to what are the consequences of getting in a fight, for example. So I would anticipate, for example, on that one, that next year, first fight would result in a ten-day out-of-school suspension. Second fight would result in a ten-day out-of-school suspension with recommendation for expulsion. Now, it's important to note that students on IEPs, Individualized Education Plans, can only be suspended from school, federal statute, for up to ten days. If a student's behavior is a manifestation of their disability, they can be suspended zero days. That is federal statute. However, assignment to an alternative school is not a suspension or an expulsion. So that's why it's, I think, partially important to invest into this type of programming and to get them the intensive needs that we're not meeting for them in the regular school setting. So there'll be some changes. So an Alternative School Committee is working through the development process in forming this program. The next step is they'll be finally way down the road. The Board has the specific steps that we're going to follow. But we'll present, our plan is to present on April eleventh the full plan in its entirety, and then ask for Board support of that plan in May. And the reason May is sort of the drop dead, remember, we have to staff this. So we have to hire people. And some of these people have some specialized skills, so that's going to take some time. But the goal is to have this school functional by the start of next school year. Any questions about that? Why don't I pause there? I know that's a lot. It's got a lot to take in.
Thank you. In regards to the Alternative School Committee, it says the committee will seek input from parents and students during the planning process. I know that this is in development, but what is this pre-framing looking like? What is, how are we soliciting that feedback and input?
The committee's going to meet with students in smaller groups. They'll meet with parents, and we'll do some surveys. So I think that's probably our best way to engage with the community. Yes, sir.
You mentioned the target population would be forty high school and twenty middle school, all but all at that location out south?
That's correct.
And is that just, those figures are based on size of the space, or?
Well, we started with, I asked the question to the building principals, and I think this is what's getting lost. What are your students like? And they'll tell you that the vast, vast majority of our students are awesome. They're great. It's a handful of kids that are destroying the climate. Well, what's a handful? So we got into some deep discussions about, well, how many is that really? How many kids are really that disruptive that is changing the culture of the school? And that's where we came up with that number, so we sought space that could accommodate that. Anything else?
Steve?
Yes, sir.
Do you have an estimate on staffing and costs?
Well, that's what we're working through right now. Some of it is contractually based. So we'll have to see how, I think, on one hand, the unions will be, in general, some of them are here, I think in general, not to laugh out loud and identify yourself, right? But I think they'll view this positively, that some of the more difficult students might be placed in somewhere that's going to better meet their needs. But the question just becomes, and how do we deliver that curriculum? And the delivery of the curriculum is what makes all the difference in the world. So that's what has to be, you'll see that there's a date coming very soon where I'm meeting with the union president of the Teachers Union, and that's where we'll begin those discussions about what that looks like. And that will significantly impact the budget one way or the other.
Okay.
I did have a question. So these students that were identified by principals, how will their parents and they themselves be involved in this process? Is it voluntary to go to the alternative school? How does that work?
Well, we're working through placement, identification, and placement.
Okay.
So some stu, so for example, we'll have a student, we have Bridge to Success currently, BTS program. BTS programs has about eleven hundred kids that have graduated since its inception. That would have never graduated from high school. The problem with BTS for a lot of our kids and our parents is the students are only there for two hours a day. And while that works for some kids, it doesn't work for a lot of other kids, and certainly not middle-school-age students. So they reject that program. So, you know, one student that was talked about, seventeen-year-old with no high school credits, and then his third year in one of our high schools. That's a formula for disaster, and it has been. So we would reach out to that student and with their parents and have a meeting with them and develop a plan to help that kid actually have a shot at graduating. You can work through BTS computer-based programs faster if you choose to. Or you can languish and never graduate ever. You know, that's possible as well. But with the hybrid model, at least there's teachers there, and they would be assigned and be there every day, all day, just like a regular school day. They would also be eligible to earn their way out. And they would also be eligible to participate in extracurricular activities as well, as long as they're meeting their behavioral expectations. Some kids would be assigned there as an option of expulsion or assignment. You choose. So that's how, it wouldn't be populated at sixty on day one. But it would be probably fairly quickly. Yes, sir.
Who's making up the committee?
It's making, it's made up of some teachers. While we're, we actually have the meeting, I believe it is on Wednesday, I believe. So I've got a core group right now of central office. I've got to have a special ed director on it, need a curriculum person, need building principals on it. There'll be some teachers that'll be on it, and there's some other interested staff that are, that are, have expressed that they'd like to participate. So that's what we're looking at, a fairly diverse group from the middle schools, high schools, and central office.
Have we reached out to anybody outside of the schools who may have experience in this kind of situation?
Yes, actually, we have trips planned to three different schools right now that run these programs, and we're sitting down with them. And that committee will sit down with them and visit their school, see how it works, and talk to those people as well. And then we'll have a consultant from ODE talk to us as well. So those will all be things that'll transpire between now and April. Anything else?
This, each week you provide us an update with a variety of different things. This will be something continuously on that update, correct?
That document that you're looking at is a living, breathing document. And I already know we've added some steps to it already since I printed it. So that'll be something that you'll be continuously updated on. Where are we? How's it progressing? What's it look like? You know, what are our options?
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. I just think it's important that we be responsive to what we're seeing, and traditional disciplinary approaches is simply not working. So wanted to bring you up to speed on where we are with COVID. Actually, in a better spot than what I anticipated. We were in worse shape heading into Christmas break. If I had wood, I would knock on it, than we are right now. But so far, we've been solid for a Monday. We were in really good shape. So, and we already have Friday and Monday off that are scheduled, off days. So I think that's going to help us as well. But currently, we have combined students and staff at one-twenty-three, current student cases at one-oh-four. So to put that in perspective, you're looking at, you know, about nine hundred staff members, and we're somewhere around, oh, eighteen, nineteen that are infected right now or COVID-positive. So that's a fairly low number compared to what we've had leading up. Currently, active classroom teachers are ten. That's as low as I've seen it in a long time as well. So I know that we're seeing raging numbers across the country, but for whatever reason, it's not impacting our teaching staff dramatically right now. Our active support staff is at nine, and total district, we've had about thirteen-hundred-and-eighty-nine students and staff that have recovered from COVID and have returned to the school. So, but in case things do go south, I wanted to give you an update on administratively how we intend to deal with that. So we would move to remote learning for classrooms for the shortest time possible. And we have done that a few times. But we would close by classrooms first. Then grade levels if we need to, because what we have found is it usually is a breakout in a grade level, typically. Right now, we're not seeing that, but that would be next, close a grade level. Next would be to close the building for the shortest amount of time possible, not the district, but a building. Now, if we start to get hit more across, the goal will be to transition middle schools and high schools to remote learning and utilize all our available district substitutes and push them down to the elementaries to try to keep our elementaries open. Why try to keep our elementaries open? Why is it more important than middle schools and high schools other than the fact of young kids and trying to work and babysit a second grader that's home for five days? We know that the learning loss is dramatically worse for our elementary students than it is for our high school and middle school. It's not good for any of them, quite frankly, but worse for elementary. And their attention spanned on, I can only imagine, and my heart goes out to you, parents that have elementary students when you're trying to get them to get on the computer and stay on a computer all day. That would have to be right up there with one of the worst tasks, I think, as a parent you might encounter. So we will do everything we can to keep our schools open, but in the event that we start getting hit hard in the next week or two, which some have said, experts have said, may happen as a result of Christmas and New Year's, this would be our plan to try and minimally keep our elementaries open. And then, of course, if that's not possible, then we would transition to remote learning. Dave, how many computers have we gotten in over the last couple of weeks? Yeah, a lot. And we got the cases in as well, correct? So we're in a much better position now than we ever have been in our plans, which is not the topic for today, but we hope to be one-to-one, which you'll get a presentation on that soon as we finalize that. But we anticipate that we'll be one-to-one next year. We're pretty darn close to it right now. The last thing to discuss is your thoughts on field trips. Some of them are pressing. The first one on that list is probably the singular most pressing, and that's marching band and choir go to Disney in March, twentieth to twenty-fourth. And we have one hundred and seventy-eight people who have paid sixteen hundred dollars. One hundred and twenty-six of those have purchased the travel insurance, meaning fifty-two have not. The refund on travel insurance is seventy-five per. The refund on travel insurance is seventy-five percent. Although they do have until this Friday to purchase the travel insurance. They've been encouraged, or the, the staff has been encouraged to encourage the parents to purchase that. It's like eighty dollars and I know we don't want to spend eighty dollars if we don't have to. But I would highly recommend spending eighty dollars when you're talking about sixteen hundred dollars that's out there. So hopefully, parents will be responsive and do that. So I wanted to bring it to you. You can see on those back page, um, talks about in the typewriting, what some of the school districts around us for, for what it's worth are doing. Kirtland's canceled overnight field trips and have left day trips intact. Manners canceled the trip to Washington DC. I don't know who, what grade, I assume middle school. But they built, uh, and a full refund to families. Parma has all trips intact. And Chardon plans to cancel seventh grade trip to Chicago and eighth grade trip to DC. Others are under consideration. So it's a very mixed bag of how school districts are responding to field trips. But this, the more notice we give, the better in terms of our intent.
I do have some questions in regards to this. If, uh, these students were, if the field trips were kept on, let's take that hypothetical for a minute. Do we have, or what plan do we have in place to support somebody who maybe were to test positive and have travel disrupted? How can we accommodate quarantine if it were to occur? And how are parents being notified of these circumstances and how they'll be held?
And, I mean, those are all very good questions in the, you know, so for example, typically on the trips to Disney, for example, there'll be four students in a hotel room. Obviously to drive down the cost of the trip. One student gets COVID. By time we show symptoms, we've probably been shedding some type of viral load for three or four days or so. Isolation at that point, you would do to the best extent that you could. But we would be dependent on the hotel and their ability to help us isolate. Can't put the student on a plane and then we still gotta bus him back. So, uh, an expectation that a parent would, I mean, we would hope that some parents would be able to come down and, and retrieve their child. But that would be very difficult for some parents and depending on, you know, the trip's only a few days. Depending on flight availability, et cetera, well, they can't fly, they'd have to drive because they can't put their child on a flight. So it presents a lot of challenges without any doubt.
Are they scheduled to fly down or to take?
No, they're bu-, they bus.
They're gonna bus?
Yeah. In this particular case.
How are athletics handled right now? Are they, are, are we doing test to play?
It's test to play in athletics.
Is that an option here? Test to go?
Well, I think we absolutely should test before they go, if we can get a hold of enough tests. Right now, that's a challenge, but, um, my understanding is that they're in the mail, right? Kids are in the mail. So I, I'm not, that, that would be our challenge, but they should definitely test to go. But again, you have the problem, well, I mean, you test positive, you can't go, I mean, clearly, right? But, uh, we would, you know, again, we would want them, in the Disney case, to at least purchase that insurance so they get seventy-five percent of it back.
A part of that travel insurance, is there anything for if these students were to fall ill? That it would help combat the cost or cover the cost of singularly traveling back?
I don't, I, I don't know the answer to that question.
Okay.
I'll find out. Would you make that note for me?
If a parent can't come down to retrieve their child to get them back via car, who stays? A staff member would have to stay with the positive child?
We're going to assign board members to drive down there and pick them up. You didn't know that?
I like going to Disney.
That was part of what you signed up for.
I'll, I'll be down there a day or two.
Yeah, you'll, it'll take you four days to get back home, won't it? Those are all really good questions and, you know, why I wanted to have this discussion was to ferret out. I mean, there, there are so many scenarios that, um, I mean, there's liability issue. There's a whole host here and I think that's probably why some places have canceled.
What's the purpose, uh, see, what are you trying to accomplish with this, this situational awareness today? Or are you looking for answers today?
Well, I think what, what I need to know is, you know, what's the rule of the board? What, what do you, um, my recommendation would be that we take it on a case-by-case basis. So for example, with, um, marching band inquire, this is North High School, by the way. For Disney, as we make an assessment closer to March. You know, if, if, you know, I'm certainly no health expert, although throughout the last two years I've been called upon to make decisions as if I'm a health expert. But what we did see in Africa where Omicron started was it spiked and it, as quickly as it spiked, it dropped. If that's the case, if that happens here in the United States similarly, by March, we could have low numbers. I don't know, are we ever gonna be in a situation where we don't have some variant? I'm beginning to lose hope and think that that's probably not going to be the case. I don't want to recklessly send our kids into, into a danger area, but at the same time, I, I wanted to experience what we can experience as long as we can do it as safely as. But there's, there's no, there's no guarantees, right? I mean, somebody's gonna go down there and get COVID or bring it back. I mean, it's just probably the way it is, but, you know, we'll, they'll mask. We'll be masking and all those things, you know, to try and do our very best to prevent spread. But I, I don't know. Some of these other ones, it wouldn't bother me as much to cancel. Day trips don't scare me, they're all together anyways, so why cancel a day trip? It's just the overnight that, um, I think needs at least discussed.
So at this point, what conversation or communication have you had from the parents of the children who are participating? Are they expressing concerns? Are they asking for us to proceed as their child?
You know, I think in general, the consensus is it's my child and if I'm willing to take the risk and send them, then you should allow it. I mean, that's the majority of my conversations. But, uh, but it varies from person to person. But we still have to be, we're the sponsoring entity.
Yeah.
So we have to be.
Well, the welfare of the children.
Responsible to the extent that we feel we should be responsible for. So if this trip was to DC today, I would, or, uh, Florida today, I would probably recommend not to do that. But by March, um, I'm hopeful that the numbers will be down enough across the, across the state that we can justify that move, but.
Does North make this trip every year or pre-COVID, are they doing it?
No, it's, um, yeah, they, they get one opportunity in their four-year career to go. So if you're a, if you're a senior, you're out. I mean, perhaps they could go next year to make up for this year, but we've been saying that a lot lately.
This looks like it's the only one currently on here out of state?
Well, there will be two that I haven't got the exact location on. There'll be baseball trips on here too. Baseball generally goes out, not every year, but, uh, they did not, the athletic departments did not respond yet. But have you, if, does anyone have a child on the varsity baseball team?
I do, and.
Are they're not going?
I haven't heard yet. They didn't go last year.
By now, okay, that's good. They don't go every year, but they go a lot, a lot of years. So these were, this was a mass email out to the administration to respond. What are your field, planned field trips? A lot of them are reduced because from last year to this year, we just, they weren't scheduled like a typical year.
What planned reviews are with the, so the, our marching band inquire, obviously the directors of those, plus those families. Is there any meeting set to discuss this amongst themselves in the near future? Where we could have, be back, provide it to us? I mean, clearly this Friday is shortly upon us, but.
Well, the, the response from, I got a long email, um, from Mr. P. If you know Mr. P., I don't know that he writes anything but long emails, but, um, and he'd be the first to admit that. But the reaction from the staff was, you aren't thinking about canceling this, are you? That was basically the reaction from the staff.
And we feel that's representative of what the families and children's reaction is?
I don't know that that's, yes, I would think that's pretty reactionary of how the majority of families would respond. They wanna go. I think they wanna go and be safe, but they wanna go. That's the biggest one though, first one listed.
Are there any legal issues that we have to deal with with that, sending them?
Of course, yeah. I mean, there's some liability there. And you can't waive liability, so the normal reaction is to, well, make them sign a waiver. You can, but you can't waive liability right now. It's a general rule of thumb.
So at this point in time, is it your request at the board kind of let you know where we're at with day trips versus overnight?
It's exactly, you know, what I don't want to do is get out in front of you and I'm making proclamations about what we're gonna do and we haven't discussed it. So this is your opportunity to tell me what your thoughts are, what you want to see. My recommendation is we continue day trips. And then these larger trips as they come up, um, make an assessment closer to the date. Because at this point, they're already at best gonna get seventy-five percent back anyways, whether we cancel now or we cancel a month from now. I'd feel better about making that decision closer than this far away. So that's, I guess. And then we, we certainly will come up with some protocols, testing protocols and some other things that we would expect them to do, provided we can get the tests.
Do we talk, do we talk amongst yourselves or do we talk to the, or?
Are you talking, well, so.
I'll say, even though I went to South, I want these kids at North to go to the marching band and take this trip for sure. So I'm all for supporting your recommendation, waiting a little bit, let's see how it goes. And, um, but yeah, this is, every, every four years, they have, these kids have to have something to look forward to. And I, I'm in support of it personally and at least waiting a little bit longer.
I agree with Lawrence.
I agree.
They should have the opportunity to go.
I think that's a reasonable process.
I agree, as a parent, you have the ability to withdraw your child from the trip if you want to. And I feel that this is an amazing opportunity as well, so I would want to wait a little bit.
I'm just concerned that over the last, I mean, two years, it's not anyone's fault, but we've just taken so much away from our kids.
Way too much.
That, um, it's impacting them academically, socially, mentally in so many different ways that, um, we're just gonna have to continue to make some really difficult decisions moving forward. But that's why you ran for the board, because you wanted to do it, right?
Exactly. What I, what I would like to ask is between now and, you know, kind of the end date is to ensure that the teachers in charge are providing an opportunity for parents' voices to be heard, having routine communications. And then the next time that we bring to it, I would like to know, how are those parents responding? What are their feedbacks? Is it the same or has it changed?
So what I'll do is I'll send out some, um, I'll have a meeting with those folks, those, uh, that are leading these trips and ask them to survey their, their parents and to have a meeting with their parents and see, get a better handle on where they stand. I think I know, but I can't say with certainty that I do know.
I just want to make sure their voice is a part of this conversation.
Understood, understood. Anything else? Okay, that's a lot on January, uh.
Tenth, still four more hours.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
So the next item on our agenda is our minutes. And, um, the approval of the minutes from December thirteenth of twenty twenty-one. Do I hear a motion to discuss this item?
Madam President, I would like to make a motion to approve the minutes of December thirteenth, two thousand twenty-one.
Thank you, Mr. Roskos. Do I hear a second?
Madam President, I will second that motion.
Thank you, Ms. Vittori. The floor is open for discussion. Okay, hearing no more discussion, Mr. Tarnell, please take a roll call.
Mr. Boxler?
Yes.
Mr. Roskos?
Yes.
Mr. Vittori?
Yes.
Mrs. Menzer?
Yes.
Mrs. Bear?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. All right, uh, moving on to the treasures report. Letter five A is the financial report for the month ended December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-one. I'd like to point out that we are still in line overall with where we expect to be in terms of our ending cash balance, which is the first graph in the report. The January, February timeframe is always our lowest cash point, just based on how we are funded with property taxes. So we'll start to see those tax advances at the end of February, even in March. So we usually spike up and then spend out. So, uh, that's why we're, you know, we're seeing those lines go down and dipping right there. But that's every year, if you see all the other previous years. House Bill one-ten did launch about last week sometime. However, you know, I want to give ODE some time to vet that and work through some bugs just because I feel like the numbers are a little off. However, uh, we are looking lighter than the simulations had promised. So, uh, a little concerning. We're working off the best day that we had, but I don't think it's gonna be as great for us as we thought it would be. So just temporary expectations. As I get more information, I'll let you know, hopefully next month or two. But I wanted to give you that update just so you weren't surprised and like, oh man, I thought this is gonna be out in December, then January, then all of a sudden in March, like, yep, here we are. So, um, the only thing we could do is continue to manage our expenses. Naturally, things like a brand-new alternative schools aren't gonna help that. But, you know, that's the cost of doing what we do. We can't be, you know, save, 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 we're in this to educate kids and provide safe environments and mental health services and give a, a really great program to these kids. While at the same time, at the same time, trying to be fiscally responsible. So it's a, we got, it's a balancing act, so we'll do it with the best we can. Letter five B is a renewal levy resolution. This is a ten-year levy, emergency levy, and it is for four point seven, four, five million dollars per year. And that is up for your vote.
So letter B, renewal levy resolution, do I hear a motion to discuss this item?
Madam Chairman, woman.
Yes, Mr. Boxler.
I make a motion to discuss treasures, item five treasures report, uh, item B, renewal levy resolution.
Okay, do I hear a second?
Madam President, I will second that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Roskos. Um, the floor is open for discussion. It's my understanding that we'll be discussing this resolution more at our special meeting on the twenty-fourth.
Yes, well, there is a second resolution that needs to be placed before the board to place it actually on the ballot with the Board of Elections. The first resolution is delivered to the county auditor's office, as Mr. Galloway ran away before I gave it, give it to him. No, I'm just kidding. So that, they could certify, uh, the millage that it would take to generate four million, seven hundred and forty-five thousand dollars per year. So that they could certify the millage that it would take to generate four million, seven hundred and forty-five thousand dollars per year. So we're, we need that figure for the second resolution, which will then go to, for your vote, and then to the Board of Elections.
And this is a renewal levy?
Renewal levy.
This is not new, new money, new millage?
Correct, renewal.
This is the five-year or ten-year?
This is a ten-year.
This is a ten-year.
Any more discussion? Okay, hearing no, just, no more discussion, Mr. Tarnell, please take a roll call.
Mr. Boxler?
Yes.
Mr. Roskos?
Yes.
Mr. Vettori?
Yes.
Mrs. Menzer?
Yes.
Mrs. Bear?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. Letter five C, this is also an organizational item. This is the Board of Education Member Compensation Resolution. It states that the members of the board shall be compensated at one hundred and twenty-five dollars per meeting attended during the calendar year two thousand twenty-two, up to a maximum of thirty-six meetings. Don't get too excited with your one hundred and twenty-five bucks. Letter five D, this is the OSBA Annual Membership Dues. This is for the membership within the Ohio Schools Boards Association for calendar year twenty-two. The amount to be for that membership is nine thousand two hundred and eight dollars, and this would include the electronic subscription to OSBA's briefcase, and last year this cost eight thousand seven hundred and twenty dollars. And this is based off of the district's enrollment.
Do I hear a motion to discuss item D, OSBA Annual Membership Dues?
Madam President, I will make a motion to discuss item five D, OSBA Annual Membership Dues.
Do I hear a second?
Madam President, I'll second that motion.
Okay, the floor is open for discussion. Mr. Tarnell, I spent some time on the phone with OSBA today and Dr. Thompson as well. Please do let me know if this is accurate or not. Not only do they provide ability for us to, as a board, call to discuss legal issues or policy, which I have done many times since November fourth. They support the board's ability to, to really govern, to trust but verify the things that are being done, correct? And it's really a board's support, and in there, the resources ensure that we are governing the district in a way that will best support it and the thriving of the children that are enrolled in the district. Is that fair?
That is fair, and they've, they've done things for us like conduct salary studies. They've done numerous projects for us and have advised the board at different times about different topics. They are essentially year-only, as far as I know, board professional organization to guide and support boards of education across the country. In seventeen years, I've never worked for a school board that was not part of OSBA.
As I understand it, they are strictly an advisory board. We're under no obligation to them whatsoever to take any of their recommendations.
No.
Correct, that's correct.
And then OSBA does write policy, but our district does not subscribe to their policy. We use Neola, correct?
That's correct.
And the price that drives this is based on student enrollment?
Yes, it's dollar, same dollar figure for every student in the state of Ohio, but based on your student population.
Okay, any more discussion? Okay, Mr. Tarnell, please take a roll call. Hearing no more discussion, take a roll call.
Mr. Boxler?
Yes.
Mr. Roskos?
Yes.
Mr. Vettori?
Yes.
Mrs. Menzer?
No.
Mrs. Bear?
Yes.
Passes four one. Five E, OSBA Legal Assistance Fund. It is the recommendation that we enter into the contract with the Ohio School Business Association or School Board Association for the Legal Assistance Fund Consultant Services for the period of January first, two thousand twenty-two, to December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two, at the cost of two hundred and fifty dollars. So they will support legal challenges within school districts across the state of Ohio that they feel have a very broad impact. So for full disclosure, the case that we had last year, the OSBA Legal Assistance Fund supported the district.
Okay, do I hear a motion to discuss item E, OSBA Legal Assistance Fund?
Madam President, I will make a motion to discuss item five E, OSBA Legal Assistance Fund.
Do I hear a second?
Madam President, I'll second that motion.
Okay, the floor is open for discussion. So in regards to the situation that you referenced, that kind of helped support the board's ability to navigate that situation?
They assisted in paying some legal fees. But that was, I mean, it, it helped, it helped with the costs.
So basically, we're paying two hundred and fifty dollars a year to that as opposed to three hundred and fifty dollars an hour for a lawyer? In some cases?
We're paying, we don't get any legal advice from them. So we pay into them, and then they will use that money to assist with legal cases around the state that could dictate the whole, you know, could be precedent-setting. So, you know, if you, say, Manner lost a legal case, then that would, and it was tied to, say.
School funding.
School funding. Then that would have an impact on not only our school, but all schools around the state of Ohio. So they will assure that, they'll give them the support that they need to try to support that school so that all schools are not harmed. As, you know, noted by a lot of legislative changes, schools are always being harmed, so they're always trying to just hold the line.
Any more discussion? Hearing no more discussion, Mr. Tarnell, please take a roll call.
Mr. Boxler?
Yes.
Mr. Roskos?
Yes.
Mr. Vettori?
Yes.
Mrs. Menzer?
No.
Mrs. Bear?
Yes.
Passes four one. Five F, this is amendment two to the Transportation Agreement. This is between us and Peterman, which does our transportation services throughout the district. This is a five-year extension, starting in July of this year, calendar year twenty-two. A couple of highlights, over the next five-year period, we will be receiving thirty-eight new buses. For reference, we have seventy-four buses that we run daily, and we have ninety buses total. So the other sixteen buses could be used on field trips or overnight trips or anything like that, athletics, or in case another bus breaks down. So we need to have some spares. You know, I give Peterman a lot of credit. I worked closely with them to work on this extension, make sure it made sense for all parties involved. And they were willing to give us a four hundred and ten thousand dollar credit per year, and that was to help offset, because we have mechanics on staff. So that would comes out to two million and fifty, two million dollars, two million and fifty thousand dollars over the course of the five-year extension. So I was very happy that we were able to get that negotiated in there. And I appreciate their willingness to do that. And it also has three percent annual increases built into the contract. So judging by inflation, that, you know, it makes sense. You know, the, you always hate to look at, like, changing services for something like this. They've been doing a really good job. I haven't really heard anything in terms of transportation. There's always been bus driver shortages even before the Great Resignation or whatever you want to call it. So to leave them and go somewhere else and lose all of our drivers that are contracted with them would be detrimental to this school district. And then just because someone else is cheaper, what kind of product are you going to get next year? So I thought this was a one for everybody to keep what we had in place, because it's working.
Okay. Do I hear a motion to approve item F, Amendment Two to Transportation Agreement?
Madam President?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to discuss item F, Amendment Two to Transportation Agreement.
Do I hear a second?
Madam President, I'll second that motion.
The floor is open for discussion. Hearing no discussion, Mr. Tarnell, please take a roll call.
Mr. Boxler?
Yes.
Mr. Roskos?
Yes.
Mr. Vettori?
Yes.
Mrs. Menzer?
Yes.
Mrs. Bear?
Yes.
Passes five zero. Five G, purchase orders and blanket certificates. A lot of these are governed by Ohio Revised Code and Board Policy. We do have one then and now certificate. This amount exceeded the three thousand dollar limit. For example, this one was for a fence around the HVAC chiller at North High School. They ended up needing additional fencing for that chiller area, which increased the amount above and beyond the purchase order and forced it into a then and now certificate situation, which is up for your approval. As far as the blanket certificates of fifty thousand or more, we have three blanket certificates. One is for board-paid STRS, which is the School Teacher Retirement Fund. The healthcare reimbursement, this is part of the negotiated agreement, and Medical Mutual of Ohio, this is for the district insurance. So those are the three purchase orders that are placed before you. Letter five H, Student Activities Program Purpose Goals, Proposed Budgets and Revisions for Fiscal Twenty-two. We're doing budget revisions only for Willoughby Physical Education and for NCI Willoughby, the Birdland Account. So those are for review and approval. And five I, Gifts and Donations, the Willoughby Eastlake Public Schools donated four hundred and eighteen bucks to the Willoughby Eastlake Preschool in each elementary and each middle school. So thank you to the Willoughby Eastlake Public Library for those books.
Madam President, we're on to the Superintendent's Reports. Item six A is School Board Recognition. You guys get to start on School Board Recognition Month. Isn't that outstanding? The Ohio School Boards Association is celebrating School Board Recognition Month on January, and to build awareness and understanding of the vital function an elected board of education plays in our society, our district is joining other districts throughout the state in recognizing the important contributions that school board members will make, in most cases here, to their communities. Often, they are required to make difficult choices and decisions, and it is really, truly an admirable job that you, that you took, that you, that you endeavored upon. Our community is fortunate to have a team of dedicated individuals on the school board, and they deserve our support and appreciation. And whereas it shall be the mission of the Willoughby Eastlake School District to provide all students the best possible education, the school board sets the direction for our community's public schools by envisioning the community's educational future. The school board sets policies and procedures to govern all aspects of school district operations, and the school board keeps attention focused on progress towards the goals and maintains a two-way communication loop with the community. Serving on a school board requires unselfish devotion of time. You guys have figured that one out already, right? Service to carry on the mission and business of the school district. The school board must respond on behalf of the community, community to the educational needs of the students. Talked about that actually tonight. And the school board voluntarily accepts the above-mentioned responsibilities. So therefore, be it resolved that in January twenty-two is hereby proclaimed School Board Recognition Month, and I encourage all citizens to publicly and privately thank the school board members for serving this community and for their dedicated service to our children. So thank you for, John, what you've done over the last couple of years. Lawrence, you're the second wily veteran out of about four months of service. And then the rest of you for what I know you'll do to your very best ability to support our students and hopefully help our district become better. So thank you. There are certificates. You get to frame these and hang these in your house. They're beautiful. They got little hands on them and everything, so enjoy. Item A is a memorandum of understanding with the Lake County YMCA. The Lake County YMCA is currently in charge of our after-care program, and this contract modification to the current contract is due to the losses that they have incurred because of COVID-nineteen. When we originally drafted this agreement, it was based on historic numbers pre-COVID. And when COVID hit, there was no way they could generate the revenue that they would have historically and did prior to COVID. So we have reviewed their books and have, and have shared. We're still making a profit, and to be quite frank, we absolutely do not want to take Y care back over, or after-school care back over and try to manage that in our buildings. It was very, very difficult to do, and the Y has done a very, really good job of doing that for us. So it's really a service to us that we're still generating some revenue from, just less than what we would hopefully post-COVID. That requires a vote.
Yeah. Do I hear a motion to approve a memorandum of understanding with the Lake County YMCA?
Madam President, I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you, Ms. Vettori. Do I hear a second? Thank you, Mrs. Menzer. The floor is open for discussion. I, I just have to say, I have personally benefited from the YMCA programs, and I'm very happy that we've been able to continue it. Are, how are they doing with their staffing thus far?
They, they've been able to staff. The biggest challenge has been the number of students is lower than what we had all historically budgeted for. So, but they've been okay on staffing. And they've been good communicators with us as it relates to COVID, and we've worked our way through all of that and the quarantining. And so, you know, it's not just in the classroom. We had to, you know, children that we're having to monitor and trail and, and contact trace in those programs as well. So it's been a lot, and they've been very good partner in that process.
Any more discussion? Hearing no more discussion, Mr. Tarnell, please take a roll call.
Mr. Boxler?
Yes.
Mr. Roskos?
Yes.
Mr. Vettori?
Yes.
Mrs. Menzer?
Yes.
Mrs. Bear?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Item B for your consideration is a memorandum of understanding with the Willoughby Eastlake Teachers Association. And what you'll hear here is consistent with what we are seeing from all of our unions, that they want to help, they're dedicated to our students, and, and I really appreciate what WEDA was willing to do in this particular case. And this memorandum of understanding is specifically addresses school psychologists. The school psychologists work on items that are extremely time-sensitive to meet the needs of IEP students very often. They are testing students, they do attendance at assessment meetings for students, and input on individualized education plans. And when they're absent due to COVID, it's nearly impossible to find a sub, any sub, much less a sub who has the skill set of a school psychologist. So what happens is the work just goes undone. So, well, what we started to see was school psychologists still working, but being charged a sick day. And we want to honor their dedication. So what this is, is a memorandum saying that specifically for school psychologists who we cannot get subs for, that provided they are healthy enough to work and willing to work, we would not charge them a sick day and allow them to do their work remotely.
Do I hear a motion to approve the memorandum, item B, a memorandum of understanding with WEDA, Willoughby Eastlake Teachers Association?
Madam President, I'd make such a motion to approve that.
Thank you, Ms. Vettori. Do I hear a second?
Madam President, I will second that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Roskos. The floor is open for discussion. Hearing none, Mr. Tarnell, please take a roll call.
Mr. Boxler?
Yes.
Mr. Roskos?
Yes.
Mr. Vettori? Mr. Vettori?
Yes.
Mrs. Menzer?
Yes.
Mrs. Bear?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you, Madam President. Item C for your consideration is the 2223 High School, Middle School, and School of Innovation Middle School Course Selection Guide Recommendations. Each year, the course selection guides are updated to ensure that they are in alignment with the standards of the Ohio Department of Education, that they match graduation requirements and that we're offering courses rich in educational opportunities. This year, we made a few changes to our course guides. These include the following changes. Removal of the old ODE, Ohio Department of Education, graduation requirements, uh, because they were replaced with new, uh, requirements, and those are included. Updated the SAT and ACT testing dates. Obviously, they change every single year. Changed the American Government course to one-half credit and added financial literacy, uh, to the other half. So as you know, we've started our bank kiosks and we're doing a lot of things to promote financial literacy. Um, and I've heard it, well, actually, I've heard it from you. But I've heard it from lots and lots of people, and it's, it's absolutely true. One of the most vital skills our kids need to be able to do is just basic banking, home finance, et cetera, et cetera. Understanding the loans and simple interest and compound interest and those things, which we're not doing very well. But we will have a course in place in high school that is a required course, uh, moving forward. So that's a change in the guideline. American Government has been, uh, a one-year credit course and included economics. And we've just separated those two into two different courses rather than a single course. So in that economics part is where they'll hit their financial literacy. So they'll have it for a semester. For middle schools, we included the exact path, diagnostic scores, suggested selection criteria for honors classes, trying to make that a bit, uh, more clear and gives kids an opportunity or additional tool to qualify for those courses. And those are the main pieces that are in our course selection guides. Item D for your consideration is the Personnel Agenda. And each month, the changes in the district personnel are required to be approved by the school board. And these changes will include retirements, hiring of new personnel, supplemental contracts, and some of the payments made to people that may have worked, uh, something like an athletic event. On this agenda, you will see examples of all of the above. That is, concludes.
Okay, so we have item eight, Meeting Notification. And this is notification of our next meeting, correct?
Next regular meeting.
Next regular meeting, so, okay. So our next regular board meeting will be held on Monday, February 14th at 7:00 PM here at 3535 Curtis Boulevard in Eastlake. And then item nine, Consent Calendar A and Adoption of Consent Calendar. Do I hear a motion to approve item A, adoption of a consent calendar?
Madam President, I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Thank you, Ms. Vettori. Do I hear a second?
Madam President, I second that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Boxler. The floor is open for discussion. Hearing no more discussion, Mr. Tarnell, please take a roll call.
Mr. Boxler?
Yes.
Mr. Oskus?
Yes.
Mr. Vettori?
Yes.
Mrs. Menzer?
Yes.
Mrs. Bear?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
So we have, uh, item 10, Closing A for Adjournment, Adjournment. Do I hear a motion to adjourn? First, is that how that goes? I've made it so far. If this is where I mess up, we're gonna call it a success.
Madam President, I make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Do I hear a second?
Madam President, I make a second and a third.
Thank you, Mr. Tarnello.
Mr. Boxler?
Yes.
Mr. Oskus?
Yes.
Mr. Vettori?
Yes.
Mrs. Menzer?
Yes.
Mrs. Bear?
Yes.
You're adjourned at 8:34 PM.